Good morning and welcome back to the recessed meeting of Pittsburgh City Council's Budget Hearings. I'm Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, and today we're joined by Director Gabel, the Director of the Department of Public Works, and with Bill Urbainik, the Budget Director for Pittsburgh City Council. And we'll open with Director Urbainik and then Director Gabel.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning.
Thank you.
The mission of the Department of Public Works is to maintain the city's assets related to parks, facilities, rehabilitating public structures, provide support to other departments, maintaining a solid waste and recycling system that promotes a litter-free environment, and ensuring public safety responding to weather-related events. Department of Public Works is separated into four separate bureaus: Administration, Environmental Services, Operations, and Facilities. As far as the numbers go for the 2020 highlights, the total budget for all DPW bureaus is $64,234,000. That's a $7.1 million increase, or 12.4%. Department of Public Works generates a number of general fund revenues. Some of the revenues have been transferred to the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, but within the department budget document, DPW's revenues include, we're in receipt of the liquid fuels tax money, $4 million is budgeted for 2020 to be received from the state, same as last year. Salaries, benefits, and reimbursements for the regional asset district parks is $401,000. Or, I'm sorry, $141,000. It's the picnic and ball field revenue is projected at $401,000. Miscellaneous expenses are $8,314...or revenues, I'm sorry. Public Works revenues, $60,457. Maintenance reimbursement, $600,000. It's an equalization payment for the city-county building from the county. Refuge dumpster, permanent refuse dumpsters, fees that we generate there is $30,000, a $2,000 reduction from last year. Temporary dumpster permits, $104,000. Commonwealth Recycling Grant that we've received, also received from the state, is budgeted $323,000. And the Wilkinsburg Trash Collection is estimated at $982,000 for 2020 for a total revenue of $6,725,000. Department of Public Works Bureau of Administration budget highlights there of that, the total $64 million we're talking about, $1.1 million is budgeted, increase of $120,000. Total full-time positions in administration is 13, and that's the same as 2020, so we don't see an increase in that. Position salary changes of note, an administrator, two was removed, and an operations coordinator added. Manager of Personnel and Finance was increased by one rate, an increase of $3,200. No changes to any of the non-salary subclasses in Department of Administration. Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought we sent it out to you there. My apologies. Under the Department of Environmental Service for a refuse collection, the total budget is $18,368,000, 1.7% increase, or 10%. Total full-time positions, 193, that's a decrease of three positions. Salary and position changes of note, the Assistant Director was removed and decreased to Superintendent with a slightly lower rate than the two superintendents of DPW operations. The net savings there was $13,724. Truck driver bees were decreased from 118 to 115, and that's where you see the difference in numbers, as well as the yearly changes within the classifications of first, second, third, and fourth year. The only non-salary subclass change of note is the $551,000 increase for disposal costs. Much of the increase is driven by an increase in the cost of, basic cost of recycling. There is an Environmental Services Trust Fund, the Solid Waste Trust Fund, beginning balance, $4,600, similar to last year, but down $240,000 from 2018. There's no anticipated revenue in this particular trust fund due to the poor-performing recycling market. The usual trust fund expenditures have been pushed to the operating budget. Do you want to speak about each bureau separately, or would you like to?
Except to the Director.
Because I'll go into operations. I can go into operations.
Yeah, you may as well do it all.
Yeah. Department of Operations, these are folks that help plow our streets and fill our potholes. Total budget, $24,120,000, an increase of $2 million. Total full-time positions, 271, that's an increase of six positions. Position salary changes of note, foremen were increased from 12 to 13, truck drivers were decreased from 46 to 43, tractor operators were decreased from 11 to 9, and skilled laborers were decreased from 7 to 6. Laborers overall were increased from 107 to 118. Operations non-salary subclass changes of note here, computer maintenance was decreased by $243,000. $50,000 is an actual decrease, $193,000 has been transferred to IMP, Innovation and Performance Department, and that is the Cartograph Contract. Cleaning increased by $180,000 due to the recreation and senior center cleaning contract being moved from Parks and Recreation, and the professional services line item also increased, $55,000, and that's for the Clean Pittsburgh Commission. There's also the Bureau of Facilities, these are the folks that keep all the properties in good shape here. Total budget is $20,592,000, an increase of $3.2 million. Total full-time positions are 91, that's a decrease of two positions. Position and salary changes of note, and associate project managers increased from a five to a six. Aquatics foreman was eliminated, roofer was eliminated, stores manager was eliminated. Administrators were increased from one to two, and a clerical specialist, one, was eliminated. Facilities non-salary classes, subclasses changed across seven lines in the Bureau of Facilities for a net increase of $2,936,500, or 27%. Largest change is in the water account, an increase of $406,000 to $3.1 million due to us now paying the PWSA for water. The Bureau of Facilities has no trust funds, but there are two trust funds in other departments that are specifically for facilities, and that's a Facilities Trust Fund within the Department of Management and Budget. Current balance, $6,600. There's also the Green Initiatives Trust Fund in City Planning, the current balance there is $140,000. Also, within the Department of Public Works, we have the Regional Asset District Trust Fund. The projected beginning balance is $1,712,000. Anticipated revenue for 2020 is $4,948,000, a 7% decrease from the 2019 budget. One decrease of one position from the ARAD DPW Trust Fund. Foreman increased from three to four, truck drivers decreased from three to two, and laborers decreased from 46 to 45. The trust fund funds, 70 positions dedicated to parks maintenance. Public Works Trust Fund is also under there, that's projected balance in the Public Works Trust Fund, $2,878,000. Anticipated revenue was $1 million, the same as 2019, and that's for the different contracts between some private and other public entities for different things that we do for them, such as snow plowing. Shade Tree Trust Fund, projected beginning balance, $555,000. Anticipated revenue for 2020, $173,000, that's a 13% decrease. There's also the Wayfinders Trust Fund, beginning balance, $300,000. There's no anticipated revenue for 2020, the same as 2019. The Liquid Fuels Trust Fund, which we mentioned before, is a revenue line item. The beginning balance, $5,070,000. Anticipated 2020 revenue, $8,664,000. Projected increase of $664,000. Schenley Skating Rink Trust Fund was transferred from Parks and Recreation to Department of Public Works in 2018. The beginning balance there is $1,097,000. Anticipated 2020 revenue, $160,000, and that's the same as in 2019. Three Rivers Heritage Trail Stewardship Fund, the current balance is $50,000. Korean War Veterans Memorial, current balance is $35,000. Open Space Trust Fund is overseen by City Planning, but can also be utilized by the Department of Public Works. The balance there in the Open Space Trust Fund is $91,700. South Side Parking Enhancement District Trust Fund is also overseen by Public Safety, but also can be used by DPW. The current balance there is $207,000. Department of Public Works also has several capital budget line items, much less than in the past, but still taking care of our facilities and many of our parks properties. The first line item I have is under the Bureau of Environmental Services for Capital. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
The litter can upgrades and monitoring in the 2020 budget under pay-go funds, $538,000. There's to be a $850,000 match for a total going for the litter can upgrades and monitoring, $1.3 million, $88,000. Also on the Bureau of Facilities, the Bob O'Connor Golf Course, projected as a deliverable, is $44,000 for the Bob O'Connor Golf Course. Facility improvements for various city facilities, $3,535,000 in bond funds. Our proposed facilities for public safety facilities, $6,151,000, looking for a match of $1,145,000 for our public safety facilities, a total budget of approximately $7.3 million for 2020. Recreation and Senior Citizen Centers, there's $2,650,000 in bond. We're also looking for a match of $1.4 million for a total of $4 million for improvements to those recreation and senior centers. Also, sports facilities, $610,000 is being proposed in bond funds, and that is also the total, $610,000 for sports facilities for 2020. Parks reconstruction, there's a total of $8,658,000 with 2.7 million in CDBG, $4 million in bond, and $1.7 million in matching funds. Parks Recreation, Regional Asset District Parks, $2,300,000 in other funds. Play area improvements, we're looking at $430,000 only utilizing CDBG funds. Public Safety Training Facility, $600,000 in bond funds. With that, we'll let her go.
I'll say we're also joined by Councilwoman Darlene Harris, who has not missed a meeting yet. So Director, we'll open it up to you for your presentation and then to questions.
Sure. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Kell Smith. First, I'd like to thank City Council for the opportunity to discuss our 2020 budgets. Before I begin the presentation, I would like to introduce my senior staff behind me.
Could they come to the podium as you introduce them, so the public can see?
Some of them could sit here.
It's up to the Director.
That's up to their choice.
It's up to the Director.
Marcel Newman is my Assistant Director of Administration. Chris Horstein is my Assistant Director of Facilities. Bill Crean is my Superintendent on Streets. Tom Pollan is my Superintendent Parks. Rick DeCarlo, Superintendent of Facilities. Sean Weigle is my Superintendent at Environmental Services.
Good morning.
And Dave Osterman is my Manager of Personnel and Finance.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you all. Thank you, Director.
I do have a short presentation, as I have in the past. I appreciate the time to do that. We continue to incorporate administrative and operational improvements even with personnel turnover we have experienced the past six years. Since 2014 to the present, we have hired or promoted 416 employees while ending employment with 414 employees. That's about an average of 70 in and 70 out every year. So that's quite a turnover every year in terms of the department. Despite the personnel changes and the challenges that my senior staff experience each day, there is much that they are proud of accomplishing, and I will speak to that in a few minutes. We continue to incorporate more technology into our daily operations for the benefit of the employee and the residents of the city of Pittsburgh. Before I close, to prepare and answer your questions, I'd like to present some of our 2019 statistics and accomplishments. For the sixth year in a row, our operating budget has finished with a positive balance for a total savings of $6.1 million over six years, an average of $1 million per year. In the Bureau of Administration, we have improved the staff skills and knowledge by providing development and training programs, opportunities, including those for certification for every employee. We have sanctioned a new six-year contract with the Pittsburgh Joint Collective Barting Committee that has many benefits for the employees but gives management more latitude with respect to daily operations. We've coordinated over 192 volunteer projects and incorporated a speedier approval process. And for the first time that I can remember, organized an employee appreciation recognition in a picnic event during the National Public Works Week. In the Bureau of Facilities, they perform 5,675 tasks, or an average of 22 tasks per day, an 11% increase over 2018 despite significant trades vacancies. And to echo on that is, we had a serious deficiency right now in electricians and plumbers, yet that Bureau of Facilities was able to meet the needs of the city right now in those areas and other trades. So they performed outstandingly. The increase in productivity, though, is attributed into management oversight and the facilities maintenance portal, which was created in Cartograph. With respect to the Cartograph Asset Management System, we have the ability to view the asset, could be a field, a court, playground, wall step bridge, building, whatever that asset is, that has been worked on and its cost. The council district of tasks was performed in and its related cost, and each task and its cost, allowing us to make better decisions with regards to our assets. The 13-member Architectural Division, which is our project architects and our PMs, have worked on 117 projects. Most of them are complete, or some are still in progress. I'll touch on a few of them here. We've resurfaced gymnasium floors at nearly all Parks and Recreation Centers. The Paulson Spray Park was completed on time and on budget. We broke ground on the Whitman Park improvements. We have rehabbed the Fifth Division, Street Maintenance Division headquarters to resolve structural issues and other improvements, including siding, adding a women's restroom and LED lighting and et cetera. We have done historical and structural assessment of the Oliver Bath House, which will drive the multi-year renovation project. We've renovated the McKinley Park Basketball Court off of Gearing in Amesbury, complete with an artist work on the court surface. We've made improvements to review stables for the Mounted Police to facilitate year-round operations. We've renovated the Larmor Park Basketball Court. We have refurbished the Schenley Park Ice Rink with new lighting, new cooling system, new surfacing, new boards and Plexiglas. And we have worked on multiple public safety facilities, EMS, police zones, and fire stations that were addressed with roofs, windows, HVAC improvements, et cetera. In our Bureau of Operations on the street side, we have finished the deployment of the censored litter receptacles throughout the city, which has allowed us to reduce the number of personnel previously committed to emptying through these units and reassigning the employees to perform other necessary tasks. For 2019-20, we are rolling out for our winter season an improved snow plow tracker, which will identify by color coding, street ownership, and what streets have been salted and/or plowed. Additionally, we have in-cab technology for our drivers to get turn-by-turn directions during winter ops rather than trying to read paper routes. And management, by way of radio communications and viewing a comprehensive list of vehicles on a computer, can dictate the ability to control the amount of salt being applied by way of sensors that we have on the auger spreaders and spinners, thereby resulting in less salt being used. We've strengthened the coordination and communication between DPW and Domi for resurfacing projects related to pothole patching, 3-1-ones received by DPW. We've required of all new street maintenance supervisors to achieve the Certified Public Works Professional Supervision Certification through the American Public Works Association, and we're requiring of all new street maintenance foremen to achieve the Road Scholar I Certification through the local technical assistance program, LTAP, offered by PennDOT. These two requirements are done in order to improve the job skills and knowledge of our street maintenance supervisory personnel. On the Parks Operations Bureau of Operations Parks, with the first three bullets here with assistance from the Bureau of Facilities, we laser grated 16 infills at 10 parks. They crack sealed and color-coded five courts at four parks, and in progress, there are four park playground renovations at four parks. I believe, specific to the table, I believe that includes Townsend and Fineview Playgrounds. With addition on parks, the playground safety inspections are now a part of the Cartograph Asset Management System. We've purchased 35 censored litter receptacles for Frick Park, and we'll continue that to move into the other RAD parks. We require of all five Parks Maintenance Managers to achieve the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Management School Certification, that's through the North Carolina State University and the National Recreation and Parks Association. They also need to become a Certified Playground Safety Inspector and also become a Certified Public Applicator. We require of all five park foremen to achieve the National Green Infrastructure Certification Program Certification through the Penn State Center. Again, these two requirements are done in order to improve the job skills and knowledge of our park maintenance supervisory personnel. And finally, in the Bureau of Environmental Services, we have secured a hazardous waste contract for city residents to properly dispose of TVs, computers, paints, cleaning solutions, and many other various items, which has resulted in the collection of 35 tons since July that hasn't gone to a landfill or illegally deposited over a hill. We've placed three glass-only roll-offs and purchased a new roll-off truck by way of a 2015 DEP grant, and to date, we have collected 117 tons of glass. We've worked with City Council and the Mayor's Office in amending Chapter 619, Waste and Recycling Code changes. We continue to see solid waste tonnage decrease each year while the recycling tonnage continues to increase, and that's attributed to better participation by the residents through the various educational spots on our webpage, outreach campaigns, and the public service announcements by way of social media. And finally, the plan to continue expanding our Christmas tree recycling into other communities and geographic areas. What started as one-location friendship grew to a competition between friendship and the north side, and now we plan to be in 12 locations and neighborhoods between Christmas and January 26, 2020. With that, I will open it up for questions.
I just want to thank you, Director, for all the work that you and your entire department do. It's amazing, the work that you accomplish, and we're just really thankful and grateful for a lot of the things. I think a lot of times you don't get the credit that this department deserves because they have done and accomplished so much. People see what's not done, they tend to overlook what has been done. And so I want you to know that in our area, we have noticed a huge change in some of the things that we're receiving on our side of town. So I want to thank you and your entire department, the Fifth Division, and all your directors and supervisors and superintendents and all those.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I think each year I want to come up, I have a folder downstairs, that any time we get a nice compliment through 3-1-1 or a letter from somebody, I keep that in a file, and it's probably about this high now. And so in four years, or the five years I've been there, it's a compliment to the staff that's here and the workers in the field that we get those compliments. I appreciate that. And it's not just in one area, it's throughout the whole department. Every bureau gets those recognition. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll come back for comments, but I want to open it up to Councilwoman Harris for questions.
Okay. Thanks. And Mike, thank you for all you've done. You haven't been political, you have tried to be fair to every district.
I agree.
Even when we have not been.
Even when I argue with you.
It's fun to argue. You know, it's good, it's okay to disagree. We still get along, and we could be a shining example for our Congress, you never know.
And to keep your old-time staff, which have been here years, helps with the experience to do what needs to be done.
Absolutely. The, you know, the simple fact that 70 in and 70 out every year, I mean, that's a tremendous turnover of new people and losing a lot of historical and institutional knowledge. And I'm lucky to have that still here, but that's why we're incorporating these educational aspects with regard to supervisory personnel, because we need them to not just step into a supervisor or foreman's position, we want them to learn about stormwater management, we want them to learn about all aspects of public work so they can transcend that down to the future employees.
So, thank you all out there. I don't think there's one of you that I've argued as much with as I've argued with Mike. But that's a good thing, and usually I've gotten my own way most of the time. Okay. I can't remember if it was last week, they were talking about that they're not seeing any women on trucks, you know, that salt the roads and things like that.
Oh, I have a very diverse staff. Ethnicity, gender, et cetera. We have women drivers, we have women laborers. I can, I have no, I mean, obviously not in the same numbers as, you know, male, but the numbers have grown over the years.
Yeah. It's probably some people don't see them because they're working in other areas.
Absolutely. But I, you know, we have, that's something I've always looked at, and how diverse our staff has really gotten over the years. Particularly in the sixth year they've been here, we've actually hired a lot of females. Women drivers started as seasonal driver, and they count on as a full-time driver. You know, started as a seasonal laborer and came on as a full-time laborer. So yes, we definitely have hired a lot of females, no doubt.
Okay. And how's it working out with the horses? I know that you've remodeled out there.
In what way? I'm not sure.
Comfort?
I don't know. Chris or Rick, anybody want to speak to that in terms of?
You guys can come up to the table.
They're okay.
I think that's up to the Director to call them.
It's up to them. They're comfortable in the audience, so.
Yeah, so we just, to answer your question, Councilwoman, we just finished winterizing the facility, so right now, that was just a series of kind of plumbing improvements, and we also created a special area to wash the horses for them as well. Other than that, it's a normal, it's a normal stable, but those were just some little improvements that we made to the facility to help those officers work year-round.
Okay, great. And we got a complaint, I guess it was yesterday, that they had the horses on, like, Belgium Block streets, and they said that would hurt them to walk on that. Is that true?
I'm not familiar with, I'm not that familiar with horses. I would say that that's more of a question for public safety.
Okay. Yeah, I have to see them today anyhow. And litter and garbage cans, I did get... And litter and garbage cans, I did get half of, I got the eastern part of the commons on where they would like the cans other than where they're at, to try to stop some of that overflow, but we keep getting the homeless in there and the people that are going to games, and they fill them up, and then they're overflowing, so I don't know if my staff shared the area of what they're looking for, for the eastern part for the cans.
I'm not sure either, but you can certainly send that again, and we'll certainly look at that. And I think with regards to, as we move into other parks with the censored litter receptacles, it will give us a better indication of when those cans are at a certain fill rate, and we'll be able to empty them better, so. And I think with plans for the Promenade, the north, the extension, that there's a plan to put a significant number of litter receptacles along that path, so we should see more receptacles in there.
That's great. Okay, and?
That's, but, you know, let me speak to, it's good that the rubbish gets into the can, but, you know, the other challenge on our plate is, with our staff, is that with regard to the homeless, is that sometimes we go to a place that is on the ground, a homeless area, and in the past, to us, that would have been litter and rubbish to pick up, and now we're challenged about, do we do it, and do we not, you know, it's, we have a challenge out there, especially in areas in parks and some of the street right-of-ways where we know this exists, and we got to be careful about what we take away, because in theoretically, in theory, it's looked at as their possessions. And so, it's a challenge for us, what was once, you know, cardboard on the ground, we used to pick it up and throw it away, now it's, could be somebody's house or something like that. So, the crews have a challenge, it's a different world out there today. But in the cans, if it's getting into the receptacles, it's obviously a lot easier to deal with, and we will address that, yes.
Yeah, as you said, with the litter and the garbage and the homeless, they started deciding they were going to camp out in West Park, and we caught them right away, the neighborhood caught them right away, and the police were able to get them and their belongings out of there, you know, they warned them, because you can't have Boy Scouts, you can't have Girl Scouts, nobody camping inside our parks without permits.
That's correct, yes.
You just can't allow it to happen, or the park will be a mess, any park will, whether it's on the north side or west end or wherever. Okay, you were talking about you can measure what salt is being laid, and I know we have the hill trucks, but if someone's not experienced, I don't know who's taking care of the trucks, if they're not experienced on a hill, then they just lay salt like they would on the flat ground, and it doesn't work out that way, you have to lay more salt for it to actually work on the hillside where the wind is blowing, and parts of the north side are higher than Mount Washington.
Well, let me address that in a number of ways. First, what I meant by that is that in a particular, say we would have a dusting of snow, we would have some drivers, by their judgment, felt that they needed to blow out a lot of salt, right, say turn the thing up to high volume, then the other driver feels he puts out as a salt spreader, right, very little. We have the ability to, based on temperature and conditions, and there's a variety of things to say to the drivers, we need you to put your devices on these two numbers, and we can then physically look on a computer if everybody's in compliance with that. So, if somebody is deciding to turn the dial all the way up when they shouldn't, we can get on the radio and say, hey, we need you to get it back down. Now, they have the ability with this to put out a blast, if they need something to, like, give them a tread, traction to start going back up a hill, they have the ability to do that, that blast goes on for like 10 seconds, and it comes off. In terms of unfamiliar with the routes, the turn-by-turn directions are going to make it a whole lot easier. If you've never driven that route, now you have your GPS telling you, make a right, make a left, and these drivers and laborers have all been going through driving the routes. Now, we're testing it and working with Quedica on doing the routes. So, unless I hire somebody today, most of the employees are very familiar with the operation, so much so that I could take a driver from another vision, move him to another if I had to, and with turn-by-turn directions, should be able to adequately do that route. And that's why they're working through the scheme of, we should go up this hill, or we should go down this hill, and vice versa. So, we're working all that out, so that these routes are defined by the way the drivers need to do them and their comfort level.
But on the north side, we have hills.
There's, we found out, there's, well, you know, we're looking at hills, and we found it out that I think 70% of the city has hills, of some, at least 10% grade or something, so there's hills all over the place, but we are working that into the scheme of the route and how it's salted and when it's salted and all that.
Not quite like Pig Hill and the hills that we have over there.
You have a few neat ones over there.
Yes, we do, but it does need turned up, or they have to come back, sometimes three, four times in order for, you know, the snow to actually melt on.
But we also, you know, we also believe that the salt that we have, last year, we got the blue-tinted magnesium chloride, and, which has a lower melting point, we found out to be, that to be very, very effective, and sometimes, you know, you're not going to see instantaneous results, you know, you can put the salt down, you got to give the salt the time to work, the vehicles to work it, the people to work it, the temperatures, how about the sun, all those variables go into the, it's not just throwing salt down, all those variables have to happen.
Right.
And so, putting a lot of salt down doesn't mean that's going to melt that snow any quicker, you know, but we feel that the salt we have, the blue-tinted magnesium chloride with the lower melting point, 20 below, 25 below, did phenomenal last year, so I think, I think we can expect the same this year, too.
Okay, and I hope, you know, over the years, that they're more experienced on the hills instead of going up and down. Matter of fact, rather than see this truck's going up and down a hill, it would be nicer to see how much salt they're laying, or if they're laying salt up or down.
And we're going to know that, too, we're also going to know after any event how much salt we used, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, with this technology, it's going to give us a whole lot of data to be able to make good decisions on our operations.
But will that be open to the public?
Oh, I don't know, I, some of it will be and some of it won't be, I mean, the snowplow tracker will be, I mean, you're going to see a nice enhanced snowplow tracker, you know, when you look at the screen now, you look at every street and you think it's, that we own all the streets, well, we don't, there's private streets in there, state, county, so everything's going to be color-coded, and then when the street is done, it'll be, if it's salted, it'll be blue, if it's salted and plowed, it'll be gray, so it's going to be very visual to the public, and same thing, they're going to be able to go right on the street and see when it was salted or when it was dealt with, you know, so all that information's going to be available to them. But there's a whole lot of other data behind the scenes that it's more important to us than necessarily the public.
I know, sometimes the public would like to have some of that information.
Okay.
But I think they did a good job last year, and hope for the same this year. It's just harder on them, because, you know, when the wind blows on the hills, and they're the higher ones, it does take quite a bit of time for the salt to work. Oh, you were talking about the trades, plumbing and?
Electricians.
Electricians. It's probably harder, because they don't get paid what they get paid on the outside to work. They have the same problem over PLI to get electrical contractors, because, you know, when you're paying like $45,000, you're not going to get them. I remember Tom Flare, not Tom Flaherty, Mayor Flaherty, when he was in, he took them out of their unions, it would really be nice if they were in their own unions, because then they know what is going on, and that's how they do it at the school district. Maybe we could sit down and talk about?
I'm not sure what you mean by that, they are in their own union, they're in?
No, they're in, I think they're in 1058.
No, the PJCBC is the Pittsburgh Joint Collective Barings, so everything, there's 1058 laborers, 249 drivers, 66 operating engineers, whatever are the other electricians, local five, so they're all their own, they have their own local reps.
They told me that that's not what's going on.
No, every union has its own representative.
So, you're saying that if you're an electrician, you're in local five, if you're a plumber, you're in?
Yes, they have their own, they have their own representatives. And we've met with those representatives in order to try to find a way to even bring people in as apprentices, and found out that the apprentice makes more than our full-time people. There's a couple of things that are really affecting it, one is the cracker plants, or the cracker plant has drawn off a lot of trades and just regular, general laborers and drivers.
Well, if you ever seen what they have to go through to be in one of those cracker plants, everybody can't pass, you know, everything that they have there, I mean, they go through, if you have loans, they go through, or you clear with Act 33 and 34, I mean, you have to be cleaner than clean to get into those, and?
That may be the case, but they're also drawing off a lot of that, those trades, and so, the cracker plants affected us, somewhat the requirement of being in this, you know, living in the city has hurt, I mean, there are people out there, I'm pretty sure, that are electricians and plumbers and other trades, that are already well-established in the suburbs, and are not going to pick up and come live here, they've been?
There's a lot that live in a city.
Yeah, but they're, we've reached out, we've done a number of things in order to try to bring people in, some have been successful, we went to PLI, and we got with every, their list of every electrician certified through the city of Pittsburgh, and plumbers, and we reached out to those people and said, hey, we have vacancies, and we did pull in some candidates.
I mean, when you have?
But we've lost some electricians and plumbers simply because they reached retirement age, and so, it's just hard to replace a lot of those positions right now.
I would say that's true for the plumbers right now, because PWSA is also looking for plumbers, but the electrical, usually, right now, there's probably 300, 400 on the book that are laid off.
PWSA, because our conversations with them, you're right, they are looking for plumbers, but they pay, they pay $5 more an hour than we do, they're not getting plumbers, if they're not getting them, we're not going to get them at $5 less.
Right.
So, we're both, PWSA and the city are both suffering, and with regard to some of these trades, and so, we've been knocking it around, we've not just looked at one thing, we've looked at a variety of things. We did pull some in by, you know, again, reaching out to PLI with that very broad list of certified electricians and plumbers, and some did bite, but then there's a lot of, again, that live outside of the city, and, you know, again, we tried to entice them to come in and move into the city. So, we're continuing to try things, and we'll continue to knock it around, whatever way we can to try to bring in that type of trade to address those needs.
But I know, other than the plumbers, there are a number of them that are laid off, you know, at times, and they probably would like to come into something, it's steady work, so maybe reaching out to that, that union, you'd probably get electrical, and I could help you with that if need be. What this one was here. Okay, you were talking about everything that you'd done over last year, and that's wonderful.
It's not everything, it's just some of the stuff, I just, you know, we could be here for a couple of hours if I did that, so.
Off the top of your head, what's going on for 2020?
What's going to go on for 2020?
Yeah, do you have like?
Just off the top of your head.
Just off the top of your head.
An awful lot of projects on the facility side in terms of the buildings and the parks and playgrounds, et cetera, there's, I don't know, about how many projects, about 180, 200 projects?
Fewer projects, but a higher dollar value, and, you know, also honestly playing catch-up with unexpended capital that we have available to us.
Right, do you have a list of what you think you're going to be doing next year?
In terms of the facilities? Yeah, we can produce that, yeah.
Okay, that would be great. And I just want to say that I, your guys are really hard workers, and I think it's because of the people that they work for, you know, they're not crazy, they're, you know, they know what they want done, the guys know, and the women know what they want, and they do it. And that's a big pat on the back for you and your directors of each other's departments.
Appreciate that.
Over the years, it's been great working with everyone.
Appreciate, I, you know, I think I got to see that, I echo that, I think we got to see that at the National Public Works Week with the big picnic we had out in Harlem Park, and?
We didn't get invited.
I hope we have it again this year, my staff, Marcel and others, did a tremendous job putting that together, so.
We weren't invited.
Oh, well, I, you know, I?
Some of us were.
I think there was, if I, we'll do lean at that, but you got to see, I think the employees really appreciated it, I appreciated them coming out, and we had a great time, it was a lot of fun, so I do appreciate the compliments, thank you.
So, thank you again for everything out there that you have done, I know I've been on you for different things, and Mike gets it all the time.
I'm pretty sure I'll continue to still hear regardless, so.
I sometimes be off, so even though I'm not here for 45 years, I was still here.
It's been fun, absolutely.
It's been fun, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris, and I just want to say that you have been here for every meeting and have worked really hard, and I just want to thank you for your attention to all this stuff for the budget as well, so thank you very much. But as I mentioned, it's been a pleasure working with all of you in the department. I'm glad you got to hear that one more time before the end of the year. As Councilwoman Harris's phone goes off, and she has a barking sound for the ringer.
If an alligator could sound, you'd have that on there.
I called her the other day when we were having a budget hearing, just to make it go off, but anyway, Mr. Urbannick, you have something that you'd like to add?
Yeah, I, well, just a couple of things real quick, as far as the Department of Public Works is concerned, I really appreciate the professionalism throughout your organization. One of the things that helps keep us all apprised of all the other projects that you're working on that aren't in this current budget but have been approved in the past, is our quarterly updates that we do, and I just really appreciate the professionalism from Chris here and all of his project folks, managers, the architects.
And Chris is not an old guy, I want to make sure I mentioned to Councilwoman Harris, he's newer to the team, but he's been an amazing addition to the team.
Excellent, excellent, yes, and of course, all the folks.
Sean, thank you.
Marcel, I miss you, especially this time of year, you did such a great job helping out and getting the budget done. But more generally, I wanted to just make a statement, this is going to be our last departmental hearing of the, of this 2020 budget session. There's going to be two other hearings that come up, and the one is the public hearing for tax, budget, and citizen participation on Monday. Our budget office, we're going to try to have all, I've been reading these numbers, and I'm sure everybody's going to be relieved not to hear all these numbers again, but I'm going to try to have the notes available on the internet on our website by end of day tomorrow, so all the things that I've read, there's also some budget tools that'll be referred to, so if members of the public would like to look there. And as I mentioned, the tax and budget citizen participation meeting is an opportunity for the general public to come down here as well and make comment, give input and perspective on, you know, from the citizens. And then on Monday at 1:30 PM, we'll have our first vote on the budget, the line item vote, which will see a series of amendments, both offered by the administration and members of council also have an opportunity at that point to put forth amendments. We'll see, hopefully, a final vote depending upon some various circumstances that are existing right now regarding contracts and such, a potential to have our final vote on the budget on Tuesday, September, or December 17. And with that, I'd like to thank all the members, I've had some of the best participation in this budget session this year, and I do appreciate Councilwoman Harris. And I do appreciate uh Councilwoman Harris. I, I will miss her at these budget hearings because she is uh, she's always wanted to be asking the questions and extremely dedicated, so I wanna thank her personally on that. And uh with that, if you'd like to-
Well, I'm not done. I just wanna also thank the budget office and Reverend Burgess for chairing the meetings, the finance meetings. But I'm gonna thank the budget office for all their work as well. You've been really always, your institutional knowledge is amazing and has been very helpful in all these um hearings. But um with that said, I just wanna add that we will be watching, Council has been talking about, I'm sure you're aware, uh the park tax, the uh increase, and we want to make sure that that money is spent by you and by your department and the work is done by you and by your department and that there is no attempt to circumvent um this department in any fashion. So we're, we're going to draft some kind of um agreements and some kind of work that we wanna let, would like to see happen. But we're gonna make sure there is, there's a lot of members who are agreeable to making sure that that money is spent the way that uh it should be spent and that there is absolute oversight on it. And so that's a-
City employees.
The city employees and that there were, the increase in labors as we were in, and employees as we were promised uh will happen. And, and so there's a lot that we're gonna be working with you on and talking to you about um in the future. But I just want you to know that we are really adamant that making sure that this is done and done right. And, and, and if, well, I will say it's done right. We're not adamant it's done, we're adamant it's done right. But um, uh, but we um, I really wanna say that I think I've watched and I've talked to the mayor the other day about um DPW and all those departments um that I see, you know, the, the divisions between now, how we separated into two different departments and how your department has been challenged with a lot of stuff. And I don't wanna, what I don't wanna see is the department whittled away. I wanna make sure that we strengthen this department and that we're doing what needs to happen to make sure that we have a strong Department of Public Works.
Sure, that's going, that's what's gonna happen, absolutely.
Absolutely. And I believe the mayor, I mean, I believe that after he's, I mean, he was here at the table talking about um the concern. So I think that, I feel confident that we're gonna be able to reach some, some agreements on what we need to have happen. But I want you to know, we're absolutely gonna watch every dime that happens and we're gonna make sure projects get done. But I do wanna say, I think your department has done an amazing job getting a lot of our parks done. Our parks were ranked number twenty-three without having to increase our taxes of all the parks across the country. So when people talked about how horrific the parks were and why there was a need for the tax, I wanna say to me, that was really misleading to the public because they were ranked number twenty-three in the country. And so I think that um you've done a lot of work with a very little budget and very little help. So I wanna thank you for, for all the work that you've done. I've seen it in my district. We're seeing a lot happening. Tonight is the Sheraton Park unveiling of the master, unveiling of the master plan for Sheraton Park, uh which we already had a six million dollar project in there without raising taxes. And that was thanks to Congressman Doyle and Senator Fontana and others, Elka Sand and others working with DPW um to make sure that uh the daylighting of the stream occurred. And so that was a big, major project that will help us be able to fish and whatever and enjoy the water in Sheraton Park, which actually ran through, people didn't know because it was so polluted, that there was a creek. And so, or a stream, the Chertar's, you know, creek runs through there. So I just wanna thank you for, for that work. But I, I, I can go on and on and on, so I'm gonna shut up about it. But I'll just say, I'm gonna re- uh make, you have a question?
Oh, after you're done.
Okay, I was just gonna say, after that, then I'm gonna make a motion to recess and then Director, I'm gonna tell you that I'm gonna schedule some meetings with you so we can talk about some of that. And I wanna thank you for your, your working on the clean sweep uh crew, which I worked with the Mayor Paduwa on and um Chief of Staff Gilman, who's always been really helpful and um, at least with me. And uh the fourth division and Townsend Park, the anti-litter campaign, which is still, I think, needs to be strengthened a little bit. But I think that she's got her work cut out for her, you know, in the city. Uh, but I think Missy does a great job. Um, the recycling program, that's, that, the e-recycling program, so I wanna thank Sean for, you know, working with us on that as well and the mayor's office as well. So there's a couple of things that I'm really thrilled with that we were able to accomplish this year. But um I think that we have a lot more to, to come, but-
Lot more to do, a lot, a lot of challenges ahead, but uh we'll come forth next year with a-
I mean, these are really some, you know, really great programs citywide that I think Pittsburgh's leading um in some of these areas. So I just wanna um thank you for all your work and cooperation with uh myself and with Chief of Staff Gilman in coming up with some of these programs. Councilwoman Harris, you have one more question?
Two.
Two?
Yeah.
Two quick questions, is that what you said?
Yes. Uh, on the war memorial, uh. Which one was it?
Korean.
Korean. Where's that one located?
Uh, North Shore Riverfront Park.
That's it.
Between the stadiums.
Okay, and you're working on that one now or you're going to be working on it?
We're responsible for all the war memorials, basically, yeah.
Right.
There's like three or four in there now.
I have a student that actually came up and did some, the one guy that left for Florida started working on the one memorial.
Uh, Federico.
Yeah, so I wanted to talk to you about that one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cause he had everything written up. I don't know who would have gotten his paperwork from-
It would've been Kaz Pellegrini will probably have his paperwork, so I'm sure that we can follow up with that.
Where's Kaz?
He's a, a project manager. I can't bring everybody to the, to the-
Usually, usually.
I have to draw the line at a certain, I have to draw the line at a certain, you know, level, so.
But what do you, what do you have to do for the Korean monument?
I'm not sure specifically what we have to do. It's relatively new, but uh there's a fund balance there so that if we need to do something, we can use this money to, to fix it. But I don't know that, Tom, are you aware of any real issues at the Korean?
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, but he, he had it where he was going to and the kid did as much as he could. He went out in Home Depot, you know, gave him like the greenery to put around it and he got all the weeds and tree trim. And I got pictures of that in my office. Matter of fact, I wanna give him a proclamation for all the work that, that he had done. We had a seventy-year-old woman that fell on the gravel and I ended up in the, at the emergency room with her. Um, cause she had nobody else to take her. But uh he did a great job, but you know, he put some stuff in the mortar, but I think it needs done professionally. So um, I don't know who has Federico's papers, but that was on there. It was supposed to be done this past year and I guess nobody took it up or so. Whoever I can talk to-
Repointing it or something, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure we can find, I'm sure we can find those and we can follow up with you as well.
Yeah, and then we moved these huge rocks like at the end because trucks that were just coming up and starting to ride over the memorial because it's at the corner of Overbeck, Brahman, Buenni. And there was one other one, um.
Would that be three questions, my wife?
Yeah, maybe it is three. Maybe it is three. Uh, I can't think of what it is. But I'm sure I can come down and, and talk to you about it. It had to do with something else. Oh, the spring, the spring.
Little spring.
Yes, um, they, when they put the lights in, the lights went out except for one and they bent out. Um, is there somebody, I mean, the people that put them in should still have a guarantee with you that, that those lights would be working?
Well, we'll look. I mean, that's a project Federico worked on before. I don't know if Rick needs to look at it. And the spigot is too long too, right, the?
Well, what they did is the week that he put it on, he used the brass, nice, it was, it looked really nice. It was a nice brass um uh for the water to flow out of. And somebody snatched that up within a week. So it is just a piece of copper hanging down, but it could look a little bit better than that, so. Um, it's great, the water is great and people are going up there getting jug by jug now that we know it's okay. And I go and use it too. I mean, there's nothing better than fresh spring water. So um, uh, it's-
Well, we'll look. Well, Chris is aware of it and Rick and we'll take a look at it and see what we can do to rectify that.
That's the only two. And as Councilwoman Smith said about the Parks Trust, if anything goes through on that, um, that's taxpayer money. And it's for you and your staff to decide what gets done. It isn't to pay any other staff, no privatization, just, you know, you, if it's coming through because uh, it's the taxpayers of the city that are paying for that. And, and the Parks Conservancy, they're great, um, but they have to draw money from wherever for their pays. And it shouldn't be from the city of Pittsburgh. They're actually supposed to get, get money to give to help the city do the parks. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. And I'll just say that um we're going to recess this meeting shortly and we'll reconvene on Monday, December ninth at ten A M for a public hearing, tax, budget and citizen participation. And then at one thirty, again, on Monday, December ninth, uh we'll take the line item vote on the twenty twenty budget. With that said, um, thank you all for being here. Thank you for all your work year round. Uh, Councilwoman Harris, can we have a motion to recess?
I'll move then, second.
So move to second. Thank you, Councilwoman. Meeting recessed.
Thank you.